Well, I'll remember to just add her.
Yeah, if I see her, I'll note her and bring her over from the audience if for any reason she's there.
Okay.
All right, and we are live.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the planning board meeting of August 5th. I'm going to begin with a roll call as this is an online meeting and that is required to get us started. Everybody on the planning board, please unmute yourself. Alden Clark.
Here.
Beth DeLeal.
Here.
Anne Gardner.
Here.
Tanya Hartford. Liam McGovern.
Here.
Rick Tinter.
Here.
MJ Verde.
Here.
Don Walters.
Here.
Don Walters.
Here.
Thank you. Bonnie Sontag here. We also have Linda Guthrie, our note taker, and Andy Port and Caitlin, the Director of Planning Development, and Caitlin Sullivan, our planner. I'll go through the agenda first. We have one public hearing, Institution for Savings, 93 State Street, Site Plan Review, DOD Special Permit. Other business, Minor Site Plan Review for Zero, Parker Street, which is asked to be continued. We'll take a vote on that at the appropriate time. Other business also includes the 2020 Open Space and Recreation Plan Update, a Letter of Support, Correspondence Regarding the Anna Jakes Operating Room Expansion, and Approval of Our Minutes from August 15th. In the section on Planning Office Subcommittee and Discussion, we have Potential Zoning Amendments, a discussion of the Potential Zoning Amendment, Section 6C, and Accessory Dwelling Units, and then any other updates from the Chair or the Planning Director. So that is our agenda. We will move to the first item on the agenda, which is the Institution for Savings, 93 State Street, Site Plan Review, and DOD Special Permit. Before we get into this, I just want to review the procedure that we're going to follow tonight. It's standard for all public hearings. And actually, before I do that, because it might be relevant for members of the public, because this is a virtual meeting, all materials are available onsite. They always are anyway, but you can actually access them as we're talking about a given application. Director Port will pull up and display documents as relevant to whatever is being presented or discussed. But if you, anyone else, wants to go to the city website, under Government, you can click on Planning Board, where you'll see a link to the agenda for tonight's meeting. There you'll find a link to each application on the agenda and all the supporting materials. And if you're familiar with this, you know that the most recent documents are at the bottom, and then you work your way up. So in light of that, let me just go over the procedure we're going to follow for this public hearing, which is no different than any other one. We will have a presentation by the applicant. We will then hear from the public during what we call Public Comment. And I'll give further instructions when that, before that session opens. We will then bring it back into the planning board, and planning board members will have an opportunity to make their comments, ask questions, and interact with the applicant, to the point where we have handled the agenda for that application tonight, and wrap it up appropriately. So with that, I will turn it over to the applicant for the Institution for Savings. Would that be Attorney Mead?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm here this evening on behalf of the Institution for Savings at 93 State Street. With me are Mike Jones, the CEO, and Kim Rock, the COO. In addition, we have Christopher Angelakis and Shreya Shaw on the Architects Team from Arc Architecture. We're here tonight to talk about a new concept. Following the last public hearing, the bank has undertaken another extensive redesign of the project. The bank and its team is going to be presenting a complete redesign. The bank is working within the constraints of the existing structure on the property, the programmatic needs of the bank, as well as the related parking. The bank is also incorporating the comments they heard from the Historic Commission, as well as some members of the planning board relative to the request to look at the proposed addition more as a transition to the neighborhood architecture, rather than a building on State Street. These elements include woodclad finishes rather than brick architecture of State Street in the 1871 building, varied use of materials, a complete change of massing and the scale to be more of a transition to the neighborhood while still needing to serve a commercial purpose, being sympathetic to a pedestrian-friendly experience on Prospect Street, similar to the rest of Prospect Street in Otis Place, including the activation of the building behind the street-level windows. And these are among some of the changes that Chris will review momentarily. In an effort to address these changes, the bank is working from the outside in. As a result, the bank will need to change its operational program space to accommodate the exterior design changes. Also, the design we're about to present does not yet include details such as the exterior details of the cornerboards, color choices, headers, and other similar design features. This is truly a concept. Nor has the design undergone a programmatic, a core services, or regulatory review to understand if it will actually work. Before these further efforts are made, however, the bank needs to hear feedback from the board. We'd like to remind the board that the design development creation is a process. And Chris will discuss the board, with the board, that design process he and the bank has undertaken. And so at this time, if you could unmute Chris, that would be great. Thank you.
I believe I'm unmuted.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much, Lisa, and thank you to the board for hearing this again. We, like Lisa said, we took a whole new, fresh look at this. And what you're going to see tonight is really a result of doing some deep listening to things that we felt like we could bring design solutions to from last time. We heard this at the planning board meeting. And as we walk through these, we'll highlight a lot of these things at the same time. But essentially, like Lisa said, where we wanted to start with this is to think of this part of the site as, really thinking of it as a resident, transitioning from residential towards State Street, as opposed to the other way around. So that's where we've started here. We can go to the next slide. So we really did start with the plan. We wanted to relook at the plan pretty extensively, and it might not look like a big change. However, one of the things that we were really trying to solve in this new concept is to activate the street. And one of the things we heard that we thought we could solve design-wise was when you were looking at this building from the street and you looked in the windows, you either saw blank, you know, blank spandrel glass, or, well, you never have seen cars, but you would see blank spandrel glass, but what you knew was behind it was parking. But what we've really tried to do is in this yellow blocks, in this orange blocks, create actual occupiable space down on the first floor, so that when you were along Prospect Street or along Otis Place, that not only you're not seeing cars, but you're seeing an occupiable space. Now, the space hasn't been programmed yet, but our intention is to make this occupied space, you know, that have activity in it. It has, you know, human-scale windows. You will see that when we look at the three-dimensionals. But really, we're really hiding this parking away. And a couple of things that we've done to make this possible is we've really relooked at how to do a one-way-in, one-way-out of this parking area, which eliminates, I think, a big change here, which you may have seen from last time. It eliminates any curb cut going onto Prospect Street or Otis Place. So the cars are coming in and out in one location, really tucked away. It's almost invisible. When we, when we show the three dimensions, you can see how this has been really pulled back. It blends into the architecture in a way that doesn't call itself out as a garage door. To accomplish this, we did push out the facade to the property line, but this is very consistent with all the other houses on Prospect Street. So there's, so our facade comes right up to the sidewalk, just as they do across the street. And you can see a little bit of how we're looking internally, internally inside of dealing with, with people getting in and out of this garage. That's a minor change to this island. I think the massing will make more sense as we start to move up, if we can move up to the next plan. Thank you. So where a lot of compromise is happening here is really the square footage of this upper floor. Right now, you're looking at just kind of blue blocks of program that we haven't decided what that program is. The yellow is circulation space, and the gray is service, just building services stuff. But you can see that that upper floor has really been eroded away, and you'll see why this is when we look at the three dimensions. The intention here is to start to think of this as not a building, but a series, a cluster of buildings that are all sized and scaled to look like the size and scale of the houses around the neighborhood. We can go to the next slide. We can always, please tell me if anyone wants to stop and ask questions, but I'll keep plowing through. If not, these sections, I think, are telling in that we're cutting right through Prospect Street here. The houses on the left into looking at the program in a couple of different places. But the key things to see here is they're introducing pitch roofs, eve heights, that are commensurate with the eve heights across Prospect Street. You can clearly see what we're intending for the mean roof height is very much the same as what's happening on the other sides of Prospect Street as well. But a key feature here is that, is that buffer space between Prospect Street and the parking. This happens to be being cut right through the corridor that connects two larger spaces along Prospect Street. But that is the buffer. That is something that will have to be activated. It, you know, may have some, something worth seeing into. That this is, happens to be taken through a hallway, but that's, this is a buffer in which activity could happen. Next, please. So we're going to get into the, looking at this more in a three-dimensional. And you can see as what we're trying to accomplish here, this is, this is looking as, just as you turned on to Prospect Street from State. To the far right, you're seeing the, the original bank building, kind of center image in the brick in curtain wall is the 1980s edition. And then we have a series of transitions that happen, our building transitions to brick with the 80s building, and then this scheme then quickly transitions to something that's more claverted and casement-looking windows and pitched roofs. And, you know, I have to, have to say at this point, we haven't looked into sort of the finished details of how this would be. But our intention is to, is to be looking at very appropriate languages that happen in the neighborhood in use of same sort of head sill jam details. We may be looking at things like cornerboards and eaves and gutters that are, that are similar. But, but as you can see here, the intention is to start to think of this back of the site much more like the neighborhood growing onto the site. The next image will just step a little bit closer, and this, this is a real, you start to see how the massing is starting to break down. So along Prospect Street, the long mass of the building is now broken into two masses that are small. You know, if you, if the masses are, look about the same size, and truthfully, they're not as long as the buildings across the street. By introducing a reveal halfway down, we'll zoom in a little bit closer there. But on this image, you can see to the right, the transition from the 80s building to this building is still in brick, but then quickly transitions to claverted. At that transition, you could probably just, you can make out just above the scale figure's head where the garage door would be. Our intention would be to have a color and texture that would blend in with the, the kind of claverted-style cladding. And you can start to see how this addresses the street and the sidewalk. The next section, yep. This is how, what I was saying, there's sort of an architectural reveal between two masses here that, to kind of what we would call house-scale masses as we're walking, working down the street of Prospect Street, heading towards the corner of Otis Place. The windows here, the sills are at 3'6". That's where we're at right now. We think these windows are of very sympathetic size and scale. They're certainly not overscaled, in my professional opinion, but they are certainly also proportional to the kind of window openings of a residential neighborhood, as you can see, if you look beyond to the other residential houses that we've modeled here. The next image, please. This is the corner of Otis Place in Prospect Street. And again, the, the massing, starting and stopping, the way the two masses come together, the way the program of the upper floor has been shrunk and eroded away, allows us to think, have this building, which is a single building, but it allows this building to have a, an appearance of a, a series of buildings on the site, a series of smaller buildings that have all been built in close proximity to each other. Especially at the corner, we've, we've dropped the mass down here to really try to be sympathetic with some of the smaller-scale elements on, on these streets. And the next, next image, please. Again, if you look at this image, the squint test for us was, you know, if you're coming down the street, would, would you really understand a transition out of the neighborhood at this point? And I, and I think the answer for us was no, that I think we're being sympathetic to the scale, breaking things down, setting things back, letting masses be either two-story or single-story in an inappropriate way. I'd like to ask Andy, maybe if you can jump back maybe three slides? Yeah, that one is great. Perfect. I did want to point out this loggia, that's an architectural term. It's, it's mostly just a kind of, an entryway here. And we really wanted to make sure that this new scheme, that this new concept had an apparent front door. I think it is important for the bank, and it's important for the concept of this building, that it does feel like it has its own address, its own front door. And in that element, not only being an element that drops the scale of the building to a more human scale as it, as it, as it ends, it, you know, as its gable end ends, you know, much like a residential porch wood or something like that, that this element is really, it's calling out an entryway, but it's also being used as a scaler device. I think that takes it through with the general concept is here that we're going for. And I think we would like to, unless Lisa has anything she wants to add, I think we would want to encourage discussion on where, where the board feels like we're going, how they feel like we're going.
Lisa, did you want to add anything?
No, I'm all set right now. I think that's a nice segue into the, the discussion.
Okay, as I mentioned earlier, we wanted to create, use this session like we normally do for a public hearing. So I'd like to take public comment first and then have the comments from the planning board and discussion with you and Chris and anyone else who would be relevant. So if you have nothing else more to say, I'll go to public comment. Is that okay?
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay. So at this point, we will take comments from the public. As we always ask you to do electronically, Andy will let you in one at a time. You must state your name and your address, and you have two minutes. Do I have a planning board member who would be willing to hold, keep time? I didn't identify anybody to do that.
Bonnie, I'm ready, yes.
We do it again. Thanks. Okay. So what I'm going to ask everyone to do, and we will do the same thing as planning board members, is to comment only on what you have heard tonight. This is the concept design. That's what they want feedback on. That's what we want feedback on. So your comments must be limited to that, and we will be able to stay on track that way. Andy, is there anything else that I may have left out before we move to public comment?
No, thank you. As indicated on the screen, and for those who just need a reminder, the way to let us know that you'd like to speak is to just raise your hand. So use the Zoom button that says raise hand. Typically, if you move your mouse to the bottom of the screen, it'll appear. If you click on that, it'll let us know that you'd like to speak, and we'll go and turn down the list. With that, I guess, Chair, I'll go, I'll start with the first folks we have. Jared Agarman, you've been unmuted if you'd like to speak.
Yes, thank you. Jared Agarman, I live at 83 High Street in Ward II, but I'm speaking as a city councillor for Ward II. I've not been involved in all of the meetings of the council, I'm sorry, of the board or the Historical Commission, but I have been tracking. This is an important location, not just for residents, but also for the city's institutions, of which the Institution for Savings is one of the best known. I guess all I wanted to say, I was very curious about the new drawings. I just got them. A copy of them moments ago, and now I've seen the presentation by the architect. And I need, you know, personally, I need time to digest them. So I don't know that it, we're ready, or I don't want to speak for the planning board, but I'm not ready to make a judgment. I do see this as a fundamental flipping of the script, where instead of sort of matching a commercial building look from State Street down to the corner of Otis and Prospect, the idea is to start with the wood, wood frame style and move it towards State Street. So I appreciate that. Need time to digest. Thank you very much.
Okay. The next person we have is Glenn Richards.
Hi, Andy. Thanks. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, Glenn Richards, 6 Kent Street. I'm also a chair of the Historical Commission, but I'm speaking strictly, you know, this is my own opinion tonight. The commission has not had a review of these, that these renderings or proposed plans as a group. I'll be really brief. If the question is, is this a step in the right direction, and that's what I think you folks are looking for, I think in general, I would have to say yes. It's, and first, you know, we do appreciate, or at least I'll speak for myself, I appreciate the bank, its trustees and board, and everyone involved with the willingness to, to listen to the input, to, to think about it, to, and to make such a substantial change, of course. Someone commented that, you know, why would you just try to disguise a commercial building as a residential building? And was that appropriate? And I actually have thought a lot about that, and it, I wouldn't think of it as kind of disguising this case. I think the architect who presented, I think the name was Chris, I'm sorry, but I'm blanking on that. But, you know, I think he did a good job of explaining the rationale there. And even though, you know, I was concerned when I first saw these about the, being pushed up to the lot lines, where it was a little bit setback before, I think the other changes do improve it. The one, the one thing that still, you know, I think could be taken a look at is, is that eve line. I, I'm assuming because of the nature of the car parking system, that first-floor ceiling height is unusually high. So if, on most of those renderings, especially the ones when you look at, let's say, Otis Place, you can see, you know, the eve height, you know, is definitely high. Like the distance between the first-floor windows and second-floor windows seems a little uncharacteristically big. You know, so there might be something you guys can do in there, especially where you've got that buffer area that you've put in along Prospect Street. Maybe you can take advantage of that to somehow move the eve line down just a bit and, I don't know, do something creative. I'm not the architect, so I don't know, but, you know, I've seen.
Glenn, that's two minutes.
Yep, that's two minutes. All right, so I'll leave it there. So my, my thanks for listening and, and making this bold move. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next person we have is Tim Whacker.
Yes, thank you very much for, for making the presentation and giving us an opportunity to speak. I'm at 13 Otis Place, about half a block from the planned project. Miss Sontag, I, you had said, keep our comments restricted to the redesign. So I'm assuming that the board won't be rendering any decisions tonight. Is that correct?
Correct.
Then may I be permitted to just read into the record some questions that I have and that may, that have yet to be answered, at least to my satisfaction, and I suspect several others? And then maybe when the board is in a position to take action, those questions will be in the record, and hopefully, some of the board members, if not all of them, will have some sort of an explanation for questions that are vexing me regarding this whole project. May I do that? I'll give them quick.
Actually, we are going to have a more detailed discussion on details of the application and, and design next, at our next meeting. So tonight, we're just taking input on this concept design. If there are issues that you want to raise in general about the application, I would recommend that you save it for our next meeting.
Then I do have one point that I can make that's tangential, and that is that the redesign does nothing to address the traffic congestion issues that are inherent here. And that's my comment at this time, and thank you for giving the subsequent opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you. Next person is Tara Cedarholm.
Hi, Tara Cedarholm. I'm at.
It was, it's a much prettier building, so, you know, I feel like.
Hi, Tara Cedarholm. I'm at 20 Fruit Street. And I've been following this pretty carefully, even though I haven't spoken before. I did want to, you know, thank both the planning board for all their effort and also the bank for, you know, taking this basically back to the drawing board. And I will say, I do think, as Mr. Richards said, it's a step in the right direction. But I think there were a couple of things I wanted to make note of. One is, I recall at a previous meeting that the building height was 30 feet, and it appeared that the peak of the building is 31.5 now. So I guess perhaps you're considering the building height at the, at the edge of the roof. So I'm not sure it completely addresses the neighbors' concerns about scale and massing. And I would, I would love to suggest the idea that a shadow study is done for those neighbors before any final decision is made. And then in terms of the design, and I know that this is just a concept, I think both the, the loggia and the reveal are very sort of, of, of today's moment or a kind of postmodern architecture, and really stand out maybe in a, in a way that we wouldn't want in sort of, I know that they're trying to break up the mass, but I'm not sure that those two solutions are the right solution. I'm not advocating for a total residential, you know, reproduction, but that those two elements seem a little bit out of scale. And, and I agree with Mr. Richards that, that the, the windows are a bit out of scale as well. Anyway, those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Next person we have is Susan Edwards.
Unmute. Sorry, this is not Susan Edwards. I apologize. It's Colleen Turner Sacino at 15 Otis Place. I don't know why it comes up as Susan Edwards. I apologize. Anyway, the reality is, this new plan is clever and wonderful, but it does not address massing, scaling, and size. And that is all we've ever asked for. I, I can't express more than, put it on State Street or push it back. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, next person we have is Peter Mackin.
Peter, are you able to? This is Peter Mackin.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm located directly across the street from the current parking lot, 11 and 13 Prospect. My name's Peter Mackin. First of all, I appreciate the effort by the bank, and I appreciate this meeting. But as. But as Colleen just mentioned, it's really too much for the current parking lot location. That location is smaller than what the proposed bigger, massive, higher. The scale is just off the charts. So I think it's just getting bigger and not smaller. As far as design, my house was built in 1860. This is a 2020 and it feels like a reproduction. And I really don't see the design breaking up that mass. Because you come straight to the property line, it enhances, unfortunately, the tunnel effect of a very narrow street. And, and all the photos or the renderings show no, no cars parked on the street. So I don't think it's pedestrian friendly either. It's just a long, big building that's somewhat disguised to be a house. And I don't really think it's, it, it's, you know, really helps the bank's brand or image. My question would be, and we have proposed three or four other possible options, which we don't have to discuss tonight. But my question is, does, with City Lift, is it possible to put more of the parking underground and make this a one-story building, 14 or 15 feet high? And so that's really all my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Okay, next person we have is Joseph Morgan.
Yes, thank you, Director Port. I just, I would like to first thank the applicant and their designers for undertaking a rework of the, the addition. I think it's moving in the right direction. I think it's pretty successful in reducing the perceived scale along the street. I think that it also breaks up, starts to break up masses, the overall mass. If people will remember, we're talking about a 30-foot-high brick wall that was continuous down Prospect and turning up Otis. So this has very successfully broken down that scale and added a, a smaller element on the corner at Otis and Prospect. I think it's using some other elements very successfully. That needs to be presumably refined in the next go around. But the loggia idea, I think, is very successful. Breaking the building in half with some element that starts to provide a house scale, I think, is very successful. I think there's still some opportunity to really set that eve at the, the datum height of the bank, which is really 24 feet. The houses opposite are between 21 and 23 feet. Their, their eve line, I understand there's a challenge here because of that first floor 16-foot height in being able to juggle that eve. But I believe that there's some tricks that could be employed to deal with a higher window elevation if needed along that facade. Overall, I think this is, is good work. And I think it has addressed the particular concerns of materials and neighborhood context that I have been thinking about. So that, those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next person we have is Claire and I believe Mark.
Yes, yes. Can you hear us? Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And thank you very much. The presented concept plan this evening ignores details about the main issues that we've been talking about from the start. And while they've addressed certain things, they just seem to be superficial. And I would really like to see more focus on the size of this structure, the massing, and ultimately, the impact. And I think we're all on the same page about impact. Because if this goes through here, what's going to happen on Charter? What's going to happen on Essex Street? When other entities want to expand? And I'd like the planning board to consider that because it does impact not only this immediate neighborhood, but our city, our downtown and our city. So until I see more about, really, give me some more details, I'm really unimpressed. And this is a slippery slope if we approve this. Thank you.
Hi, Andy. This is Mark Griffin. Can I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I meant to address that to Chair Sontag as well.
Sure.
Yes, so, you know, obviously, this is a significant change in the plans that have been presented. But we have to consider that this has been pending for a very long time. And the plans that have been presented previously have been grudgingly changed in minor ways. And so when we finally get to this point and we see something that is suddenly not brick, we think, wow, the bank has really come around. They've made a significant change. Oh, okay, they've made a significant aesthetic change. They haven't made a significant change with respect to the footprint. It's virtually the same. The height, it might actually even be higher. We're building out, again, basically to the lot lines. I can tell you that the, the building wall and the pedestrian walkway that are close to my kitchen window haven't changed, although now it'll be a wood wall rather than a brick wall. So, you know, I, I was heartened by the last meeting when Board Member Tainter, you know, thought that the building should be brought up towards State Street. I thought that was a great idea. That, to me, would have been a significant change. This is more of an aesthetic change. So, you know, I'm not on board with everyone patting the bank on the back for making wood buildings. So just because they had brick before and they didn't make many changes before. So color me unimpressed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next person we have is Steve and Renee.
Yes, hi, this is Steve and Renee Charette. Steve Charette, 16 Prospect Street. We're right on the corner of Prospect and Otis, 45 feet from the proposed expansion. And I think, you know, my neighbors have stated it well. I think Mark Griffin just really stated it well that this is an aesthetic change, but it really isn't addressing the size, the scale, and how it's going to affect us as homeowners. The planning board, I'm grateful that there was some recognition last meeting regarding the lack of light, the lack of airflow, or how it may interrupt light airflow, put us in the shade. And also, we're very concerned about the sound and the noise emanating from the building services equipment, which we hear now and it's several hundred feet away. Stands to reason that with the building right on top of us, that there's going to be a substantial increase in the building services equipment noise emanating to us. So aesthetically, this is a change, but it's really not addressing our main concerns, which is the size and, and scale of this building. And I, my wife and I are very, much more in favor of this expansion being on State Street. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next person we have is Richard Pollack.
Am I unmuted?
You are.
Okay, hello, my name is Richard Pollack. My wife and I own the property at 1, 3 and 5 and 7 Garden Street, which is right in the backyard, our backyard. The building is right in our backyard right now. And during the review, I, I'm concerned that I didn't see anything about what was going on in the backside of the building that would be, that would, my tenants would be facing. I have nine tenants in the, in the properties and they, you know, they're going to be facing whatever is built there. I'm also concerned about the size and the lack of sunlight, the noise from the generator that's still there. That wasn't addressed in this, this presentation, which I've, I've brought up before. And the air conditioning, the water, the water that's going to come over my property because of the roofs. So I've had, I've had backyards full of, full of water during the spring presently. So I just think the house is, you know, the, the construction is just too much for, for the area. And it's going to take the sunlight away and everything out of my backyard. So that's my concerns. I think the bank is trying, but I would, I think they'd be better off to go back up on State Street, like a lot of people have suggested. And that's where a commercial building should be, not parking and all that in our, in our neighborhood. And again, the traffic jet, you know, there's no parking on the streets at any time in this area. So that's my say. And I'd like to look at, thank you for letting me speak.
Okay, thank you. The next person we have is S. Nasir. The person identified as S. Nasir, are you able to unmute yourself? Looks like they're maybe having some problems, so we'll give them a moment. Go to the next person. Sean Sullivan.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, this is Sean Sullivan. I live at 9 Prospect Street. I'm directly across Prospect, the small yellow house from this development. And so my comments are, the new design is interesting, but the change, it made the issues I had worse than before. My problem has simply been the size and the massing and the shade that it casts on, on a south-facing house. And this has been ignored. And it's gotten worse with the height of the structure going up. The bank shows these plans next to the largest houses, not the smallest houses. My eve line is 16 and a half feet. So it only, still only comes up to the bottom of, or the middle of this, this structure. And a basic shade analysis shows that this is still just as bad or worse than before. And so I still have the same comments that I've, that I've had the past few times and the same comments that some of my neighbors have said earlier. Just the size of massing and the shade have, while the exterior has changed a little bit, in my opinion, it's gotten worse. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next person we have is Anne Marie Clausen. Anne, are you able to unmute yourself and speak?
Hello, my name's Anne Marie Clausen. My husband and I and our daughter live at 3 Otis Place. And we agree completely with what Claire and Mark had said. State Street was a great idea, whomever came up with it. We are fully behind that option. And it feels though the planning board and Historic, Historic Committee, Commission has been ignored regarding the massing, scale and height. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Johnson.
Thanks, Andy. This is Cindy Johnson. I live at 99 Lime Street. I've spoken before. And I just need to add my voice to say that I'm so impressed with the bank's management and their ability to go back, hire additional architects, pursue comments that were made both by the Historical Commission and the planning board, and that this design has the potential to be world-class. Living in the crowded South End, you talk about transitioning to the neighborhood. That is a real transition. And I think it's a, it could be a real feather in New Reports' cap to show just how you transition from a historic building into a historic neighborhood in a very sensitive way. That's all I'd like to share with you. Thanks.
Thank you. Looks like S. Nasir, looks like you're still having some problems unmuting yourself. Pamela Kip. Pamela, are you there? You appear to be unmuted, Pamela, but we can't hear you. Okay, take a pause there for a moment. Patricia Pecknick.
Yes, hi. Patricia Pecknick for Dust Street, and I am the vice chair of the Historical Commission. Successful additions on historic buildings, of course, can result from very different design approaches. But what is common to buildings that meet the secretary's standards is that the additions are subordinate. So I, the challenge here for me is standard nine, which requires compatibility with massing size, scale of the property and its environment. The secretary on page 156 of the 2017 standards, which is on the NHC website, recommends against, quote, "constructing a new addition that is as large as or larger than the historic building" because it's important not to visually overwhelm the historic structure and the environment. That's why we, as an historical commission, make exceptions on standard nine only when the large addition will be hidden on a new elevation that is not visible from any public way. The National Alliance of Preservation Commission's explication of standard nine with regards to subordination is that the inquiry must not privilege only the view from the center facade of the historic structure. And also that the highest standards for subordination in historic districts should apply to corner lots. And that has been the practice of our Historical Commission as we've consistently made clear to applicants. So to me, to satisfy standard nine, the horizontal massing of these additions can be greater than that of the historic structure if the vertical massing is lower. Or the addition height can be just a little bit lower if the horizontal massing is reduced so that the volume proportion of addition to historic building is closer to one, one-to-one, you know, 1.5 to one, but not as we've seen previously, you know, 2.5 or, or three to one. So I remain concerned with height and with overall volume.
Thank you. S. Nasir, are you able to unmute yourself? Yeah, Chair, it looks like everybody's been able to speak who's expressed interest so far, with the exception of the S. Nasir, who unfortunately seems to be having an issue unmuting oneself.
Right, we will close the public comment session for this evening and move to planning board comments. And what I'd like to do is manage this as much as we can as a conversation back and forth. So when a planning board member makes comments and has questions, I'd like the applicant to respond. And the next, they can follow up or the next person can build on that or bring in other comments. And we'll try to go back and forth and see if we can manage this in the virtual setting. And if we start tripping over each other, we'll find another solution. But I think, having heard from the public and having heard the presentation, it's time for us to have as much of a conversation as we can between individual board members and I'd suggest the applicant's architect at this point. With that said, I'll open it up to the first planning board member who would like to comment.
Nobody else is speaking. I'll take the first shot. I do think that this goes a long way toward addressing a lot of the comments and concerns that were raised at previous meetings. I, I do think that, I think that in contrast to the previous plan, it is much more successful in addressing the requirement of the zoning ordinance that it be consistent with the residential, adjacent residential neighborhood. Or zoning ordinance doesn't require, doesn't represent, or refer to residential, but it does refer to the adjoining properties within the. but it does refer to the adjoining properties within the, within the district. And the adjoining properties within the district are all residential. So I think that is, this has done a much better job of doing that. There is a challenge in terms of scale, but I think that the, the new design, the new concept design goes a long way in that direction. The building is taller at the peak, but at the street line, it is, it is much lower, I think. And the pitched roof certainly addresses some of the shadow issues that I was concerned about last time. I did, I did a kind of a rough shadow analysis at the last meeting, and I think this would solve quite a bit of that, looking at the angle of the sun at different times of year. I do think that the, it does, it has a very nice combination of traditional and modern elements. I do like the Loja idea. I'm not sure about the specific design, but I do like that idea to break up that facade and create an entrance. And I do like the, the way the building is divided by the reveal. We've seen other examples of that type of architecture in the area, so I think, I think that makes sense. And I do think that it's, it does a better job of addressing the subsidiary or subordinate relationship of the building to the historic building, especially when seen from the, from the State Street angle. Obviously, because it's right facing the Otis Street and Prospect Street properties, it's still, it still can't be subsidiary to the bank because it's much more in their face. But I think it does a better job. I did, at the last meeting, ask to have the idea of something similar to the library, a, a model similar to the library across the street be considered. But it is a tight site, and I recognize that. So to get space on the site, it may not be possible to do that. I guess a question that I have is about the one-story building on the corner. It would seem, it seems odd to me, and it seems like that it might make more sense to anchor the corner with a, a two-story building and maybe in that way get some distance from the Otis Street of butter for the, on the second story. But that's just a concern, I mean, a question. And just another question, the, the renderings show some trees on Prospect Street. Again, I question whether those trees can really be fitted in there. And so whether the building is, is really softened as much as is suggested by the, by the renderings. But in general, I think this has gone a long way to addressing a lot of the questions that people have, that members of the board particularly have raised. And I do appreciate the, I think, a creative attempt to enclose a, a modern commercial space and yet try to be sensitive to the surrounding neighborhood.
Chris, would you like to address any of the questions that Rick mentioned in passing? Or would you rather hear from more of the planning board members?
I can, I can say a couple of words about the, the things that are, that are being discussed. I think, you know, the, the, the question of scale and massing and how to break these things down, of course, has, has some kind of clear architectural approaches, but they can also be subjective. But, you know, I think what we did when we sat down to think of a new concept was to say that, that we should be looking at roof forms and gable ends and stretches of facade that are no bigger than the surrounding, you know, some of the bit larger houses that are near it. And so when you, when you kind of put that rule on yourself, yeah, the, the building is, does stretch out on Prospect Street enough. But we thought, you know, if we included a reveal and recruited, included this one-story end, that, that we, we, we've, we've agreed with our own rule. So in, in, if you look at this, this image that's up right now, the fact that you have a gable with another gable set back with a loa thing in front of it does to us feel how a neighborhood would naturally progress where not everything is built at one time and maybe additions will come on. So, you know, I, this is how we sat back and evaluated it for ourselves. And I, and I agree that, that, that some people might find it odd. But I think also, you know, what we did was took a view like this and kind of gave it a squint pass and said, you know, does this start to feel like something that would have aggregated over time? And, and this is where we landed for you tonight. It's not to say that there weren't other options in the pocket, but we thought this is our, this agreed with our approach the best.
Specifically to what Rick had asked about softening the facade with the street trees. Did you respond to that while we had it?
Yeah, it's an easy response, and that's, we're not there yet. We need to, we need to detail out what space we really have at some of these setbacks to see where and how street trees or plantings or buffers can be, can be implemented. I, I think the gentleman is probably correct that we may have too narrow of a sidewalk area at that one, there's one tree in particular, I think, in this rendering. That, that, you know, could be a challenge. But certainly I've seen street trees done in, in, you know, in a sidewalk like that. But it's a question of, is it appropriate? And I think we want to, you know, after tonight, if, if, if we think that this is the right direction, we'll be, we'll start detailing those kinds of approaches out.
All right, let's go on to, to somebody else on the planning board. Other comments, please?
I'll go ahead. I, I, I agree. I think this is a huge step in the right direction, and I appreciate, I do appreciate the bank's pivot here. Because I think it, it, it really does a lot to address the transition into the neighborhood. I, I think the, I'm just, I have a little list here, so I'll just go through it really quickly. I think the Loja is actually interesting. I actually like the way it's drawn. It suggests something a little fresh for, for Newburyport, which I find a little bit exciting. Couple other comments. It would be interesting to consider maybe perhaps some sort of a doorway on the, on the ground floor, I think. Just to, again, make it feel a little more neighborhood-y. I know that may not work with your, with your plan. I'm also interested, I, I also would echo some of the comments about the, the window heights. I know it's going to be an incredible challenge, but to the extent that you can make the window heights match a little bit better the, the street, across the street, I think that would be, it would benefit the, the elevations. There's something about the third building on Otis Street, that all three of the buildings look identical. It would be interesting to see if they could each have a little bit more personality. Or at least one of them, in particular, the one on Otis Street, seems to me it should be different from the other two, but that's just an observation. I imagine you would test that. It would be also interesting to consider, given the comments about the trees and the going, building right out to the street, which I'm generally okay with, but it'd be interesting to consider, since you have a, a narrow hallway there that really isn't doing much of anything on the ground floor. And one could also argue it's, it's odd to disguise a garage so literally, to make it look like a, a literal residence, that it would be interesting to consider pulling, pulling that wall back a little bit, giving a little bit of a, more of a setback. And also in that, in that gesture, you would be reducing the, the peak height. It probably has impacts on your second floor, but I would suggest that as something to explore. And maybe it even goes in and out at some places. Again, that might be complicated, given the parking that has to happen there. But I just throw that out there as a design thought that might address some, some people's concerns. I also think that this, this plan, given that it's, the massing is broken up more, I think it becomes a language that's so independent from the original bank structure that I think it does a good job of contrasting with the bank. I mean, it looks like a, an entirely separate development. It doesn't look like an addition to the bank. So I think that is a, is a positive argument for this, this concept. So in general, I think the concept is heading in the right direction. I think there are lots of little things we could talk about. I threw out a couple ideas and a couple things that I think about. But I encourage the bank to pursue this.
I'll quickly respond to just a couple of those. There, I, I think the, the two items that you brought up, doorway on the ground floor and the hallway, hallway issue. I, I don't want us to focus on the hallway so much. The hallway is actually connecting two areas in the plan where, where real, real program can happen. And of course, if, if we continue with that concept, there, there will certainly be a doorway on the ground floor where, where there is a real entry point. So hopefully, we can move forward with this concept and prove out that that, that's worthwhile. I think, I think we, we here on the team here feel like there's, there's some upsides to, to really keeping that street active and in not making the quote-unquote dead facade that, that I think we heard very well from the previous critiques. The window heights, the window heights, of course, is a, is a, is a game of, you know, we, last time we heard that the windows were out of scale. They were tall, but, you know, this is the game of scale, right? If you stretch them too high to, so they feel like they're, they feel like the space in between a first story and a second story window is diminished, then, then the critique comes to you that your, your windows are too big. The windows here are, I would say, you know, I, I think we could argue very well that they're residential size. As far as how, how the windows are across the street, of course, we're across the street from, from three or four buildings. So they, they, the window heights pop up and down a lot. The, the three that are multi-family, their sills are actually quite high. They're higher than I think we would want on a street, on a building that has a ground floor entry. Their, their sills are up around five and a half feet. And then their heads, heads are somewhere in the 11-foot range. Our heads on the first floor really, really only come up to about 10. In our sills are at three and a half. We certainly hear that and would be willing to, to push those up because we do have the space to, you know, and maybe there's some interesting variation in architecture to do that. But I just wanted to kind of speak the, the architectural scale challenge. You know, it's hitting, hitting the, hitting that perfect target of, 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 you know, size versus scale. I think, I think we'll do the best we can to, to make it comfortable, but I think this is a good start.
Okay, we'll hear from another planning board member. Thank you, Chris.
I'm happy to go next. MJ. I think I would agree a lot, or most of the comments of, from Rick and Leah. I would add in just a couple of my own. The image that on Otis, I, I'm going to take off on Leah's comment about a door. I mean, you'll, you'll need a second means of egress at some point. And the facade on Otis that to me looks like an extra-large infill. So the three-story peak next to the one-story corner piece, it just feels out of scale. And, and maybe referring back to what Leah said, it's like part of the same development. Maybe that is a place where we have a change. It looks like the, the back of a building because it's, does not have an entry. So I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity there. And it just feels like it's really overwhelming the house with the gambril next to it. I guess I would also just question about what the woman's name from the Historic Commission, who I don't recall her name, but talking about the addition being subordinate. And the scale still feels a little large to me. And I do question if there's real numbers that relate to that. I obviously haven't done the math, but is it, is it really subordinate? I mean, it's still a big, big structure. As much as I, I really commend the bank for flipping completely and going to something that's much more contextual and fits into the neighborhood, I, I think it's still large. And I guess the eve line, I do feel like it could come down a foot or two on Prospect. And I think those are pretty much all my points to make. Thank you.
Okay, Chris, would you like to respond to any of that?
Sure. I, I, I think some of these are repeat comments. I think the Otis Street corner is going to get a lot of attention here. I, I think we, we can discuss further what can be done. I, I think I've already spoken why we think that was a, a good approach. There are other, other ways that we can, we can think about, however, you know, I would, I would, I would, I would still stick to our guns a little bit. I mean, the way it's rendered, of course, is, is more fungible. You know, does it look one way or another? Does it look like something additive? Or does it look like something that is extend, an extended part of a larger form? I think we can study that. The scale being subordinate, I, you know, it's hard for me to, to speak to that. We've done everything, I think, we can to make it subordinate. I mean, the, the bank has a program they're trying to achieve. The program generates a parking count that they are trying to achieve. And that results in a, in, in a, in a floor space that needs to be achieved. And in, given those givens, you know, I think we believe in this approach that it is as subordinate as possible. And that, that I think that's about as far as, and the rest of that is a little bit more subjective. Eve lines, I think I would refer to our sections to discuss eve lines. Right now, especially in a conceptual design approach, eve lines, eve lines are being set for, for us to have some ability to develop the building structurally and all those things without hamstringing us and having to come back and raise them later. I mean, I, I think we are extremely comfortable that this eve line, which is, which is, is quite similar to the adjacent eve lines of the, of the three multi-stores across the house, makes some sense. And, and so, you know, I think we can, as, as things develop, look and see if we can sneak some of that down, sure. But starting here, I think is a good place because things just get tighter and harder as we get into development. But that's about as much as I can say about the eve lines.
Okay, I'll take another planning board comment, please.
Bonnie, I can go ahead. I don't want to, I agree with a lot of what has been said before. So I don't want to repeat all of that. I do think this is a good step. Like MJ, I am, I do still think the scale is a bit large. I would like to see, you know, once it's further along, a view from the front of the bank. See, I know that that's not the only view we should be considering in determining whether the new addition is subordinate to the historic building. But I do think that would be helpful. A street-level view where we could see all of it and see how it all fits together. I do wonder if it's possible, you know, the architect mentioned the numbers for the parking are sort of driving some of the scale and size of this. And I would just encourage the bank to consider whether there are any other possible configurations, whether using the lift or, you know, maybe having some off-site parking where they could pull building in a bit or, and/or lower the roof height just to, you know, cut down on the scale a bit. So that would be, those are my comments.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for your comments. I, I think it would be nice, well, I wanted the board to hear that, that this, these images that we're showing are from a live model. I mean, we, you know, our process is to do things perceptually and three-dimensionally all the time. And back into the two-dimensional drawings, once we've solved the three-dimensional problem. So as far as getting views from anywhere, So as far as getting views from anywhere, we can certainly show any board member, any view from anywhere if they, if they choose. So we can make those available. Certainly if we speak next time, that, that we can make sure to get you the views that you want to see. In other planning boards that we've gone before, we've actually been able to drive the live model so that that can be done in real time. I, I would encourage this board to consider that in the future as well. It's, it's a very helpful tool and it lets you know that we're not hiding anything because we're not. It's, it's built into a model and, you know, if there are rough, you know, if there are rough parts, you're going to see them. So I would encourage you, the board, to consider that in the future. The parking configurations have been studied exhaustively. So there's a lot of code driving this, things that we are, are and are not allowed to do by Massachusetts state code. I, I think to this point, the, the parking counts are what they are unless some crazy variance happens. But I, I think what we're trying to do is be very responsible and follow the rules as they're written and make those parking counts work as they are prescribed. I think that's it for me on this, on this comment.
Okay, we'll go back for further planning board member comments, please.
Bonnie, I'm happy to take a shot at this. I'd like to kind of go over some of the points my fellow planning board members made. If for no other reason, the applicant eventually needs to have for the special permit, six positive votes. So I, I just want to be sure they know where I stand on, on some of these. Perhaps I could take the State Street location. I think having in our prospect is better than, than State. I spent a reasonable amount of time today on State Street, walking back and forth, looking where the facility would be, the building would be. And I've come to the preliminary finding that the building is generally remote from the historic or, or separate from the historic building. First from the distance and, and the addition that was placed. And secondly, the, the trees that are on State and also the, the part of Prospect Street, you know, where the drive-through is, et cetera, are very large. That may bring up a question in the future, is what happens if those trees become diseased or whatever? But for the time being, I, I think there is a fair amount of separation. I know Ms. Pecknick also mentioned the subordinated Asian. And I've taken a look at the U.S. Secretary of Interior Standards and perhaps in fairness to everyone, I've, I've, I'm going to take a section and I don't think it's out of context, but I just want to throw this out. And I don't know the particular page number, but it, it says for a new addition to historic structures, it says recommend it. It says, as, as Ms. Pecknick said, ensuring that the addition is subordinate and secondary to the historic building and is compatible and massing scale materials, relationship of solids to voids and color. Then it says not recommended. And I just wanted to, this I found interesting myself. It said constructing a new addition that is, is as large and, or larger than historic building, which seems to be fairly factual. And then I think the key point in my, in my opinion was comma, which visually overwhelms, i.e. results that the demunition or loss of its historic character. So because I think of that prepositional phrase where it says it would have to really take away from the historic one, I, because of where it's located on the property, I, I personally don't see that, see that happening. If we now go on to the issue of important issue with many of the butters is how does this look on Prospect and/or Otis slash Garden? I do agree, I do like it closer to the street because I think it's consistent with, with the houses that you see on, on the streets I just mentioned. And I do think that the, having a gable type of roof, whatever, is similar to the architecture of the other houses there. And I think it's similar to what, what some, we've done in some buildings where we said more of a commercial building, we have step backs, five floors or four floors inside. So when you look at, so I, I do think it softened a bit from before. And I do appreciate the suggestion because one of my comments I had here was architectural 3D. I'd like to see some rendering of something with a closer view. All those perspectives are very far away. And when I was at the corner today of Prospect and State, the buildings look different from your eyes, your focal length and what this perspective is. So I think by the suggestion of the architect that we can have some type of a walkthrough is extremely helpful and I surely would, would encourage that. I, I, I'll, I'll defer the others with respect to some of what I consider the details, the, and not that they're unimportant, but the, the windows, the heights and et cetera. I, I think the other point I would make, which I think is the elephant in the room that that's been mentioned, is people say the scale is that, I mean, you know, height with et cetera. I, I think my, 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 my sense is that people are, are concerned about the height. Yeah, yeah, they like it a little bit less from, from the property line. And, and I, in my opinion, right now, my preliminary thought is that it's either a one-story, a two-story building at the end of the day. And so at this point, I'm inclined to, to, to be in favor of the general height that's there as compared to one-story building with, with a slope proof or whatever. Thanks, Bonnie.
Anything to come on there, Chris?
No, I mean, of course, I appreciate the, 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 the look at it and in the way that you are seeing this. I think we agree on a number of these points that are, that were made. I will talk a little bit about the images we've shown. We, we show all of our image at 60 degrees, 60 degree, which matches sort of an eye, in human eye. So we do the best we can to put these cameras views as if you would see them if you were standing on the street. But again, nothing can beat it if you're actually kind of allowed, are kind of driving, driving around this thing in real time and seeing how each of these things interact with each other. So, and I appreciate the scale versus height thing. I think scale is, is sometimes, I think scale is sometimes used for the word big, but scale is a proportional thing. And I, you know, I, this is something that we work really, really hard at, at getting scale right. And what, what we're doing is, is trying to mitigate between the scale of a neighborhood and how to be subordinate with a, with a significant historical building. I, I appreciate that, that it sounds like, that you feel like we're, we're getting there.
Good. Okay. Sorry, who's next? Tanya?
Bonnie, I can talk, yeah. So I have, I had some technical issues, so I may have missed some of Leah's comments. So sorry if I repeat those. I think overall, I think personally, I'm, I'm not a fan of fake residential in a commercial building, like where it looks like a residential building when it's actually commercial. But I understand sort of the reasoning behind this. And I think that there does seem to be some comments in favor of this being a better scale from what some of the people were looking for. So I think that, and I, and I do like the, I do personally like the clapper. And I think it softens, softens some of the brick. And I like the fact that some of the planes are broken up, so you don't just have a large brick wall. So I think I do like that. I, I'm curious if the pitched roof, if that, does that, how much is that raising the roof height from what you had when you had the flat roof? And does that reduce the shadows that you're, that you're casting under the street or not? I'm curious on that. Do you want me to ask all my questions, Bonnie? Or do you want to have a back and forth?
No, back and forth.
Chris doesn't answer that.
Yeah.
Yeah, then, then let me insert a couple of those. So the pitched roof, I, I would simply refer to the, to the section. I think that kind of answers where, where we were, or where we are now. And in, so the answer is, you know, last time there's a two-story flat roof building. So clearly the peak of this gable is higher. The eve height is generally in the same place as where we were, if not a little bit lower than the previous proposal. And the question is, does it, does, does it change the, does it change the, the shadows? And the answer is no, it doesn't. The, the shadow, shadow casting of a two-story building, whether it's pitch roof or not, is generally the same because of, you know, it, you know, to be scientific about it, when, when the sun is super low in an evening or a mo, on a morning, yeah, the, the shadows lengthen. But when you get into mid-morning or, or late evening, they're, they're essentially the same.
Okay. The other question I had was, I, I feel as, I feel as if having a single-story building on the corner of Otis and Prospect seems a little weird. It just seems like out of scale. Just to have a single-story building there, there's, there's not really any single-story buildings in this, in this neighborhood. And I'm, but, but that being said, I wonder if you, if it, if it could look, if you are going with this like fake residential, if you took that one-story building and moved it over to, you know, flipped it so that that way you had the two-story building on the Otis and Prospect, you know, sort of really mounting that corner and then had that single-story structure next to the smaller house that's to Mark's house there? And, and whether that would change, whether you'd be able to do that from a design perspective? So then it looked like, almost like an accessory building or in addition to this fake house look that you have going on at Prospect and Otis Place. It's just a comment, just, I was just thinking, this just seems out of place where it's at right now, in my mind.
I mean, I think the best we can do is take that as a suggestion.
Yeah, that's just a suggestion.
And look at it. I, I will, you know, just to give you a, one second design speak about it is, you know, if, if we were to do that, we'd be looking at a very long stretch of, of taller building on Prospect Street. And we were trying to do the best we could to balance the Prospect Street issues with the Otis Place issues. And in right now, I think we're agnostic of which one is more difficult to solve. So this is, I would say, this is the balanced scheme. This balances Prospect with Otis in, in the best, in, in the best we could for this meeting. And like we did last meeting, we'll, we'll take these comments to, to heart and see if something emerges out of it.
Okay. And then my other, my other question, this is, this is not something I think you necess, or not question, but comment, is it seems like there is still a neighborhood concern on the massing and the scale. And it seems like some of the massing and scale is coming from the fact that, that there is so much parking that is in this site, which is, it's an unusual amount of parking for, for the downtown commercial building. And, and it, you know, and I wonder if, if there's an option to reduce the parking and to do some off-site parking? And could you then reduce the scale and the mass? And I know that, that would be another redesign, but I know I for one would be supportive of off-site parking. And I guess that the neighbor, neighborhood in some ways, I guess, would have to think about is that, is that, is that a trade-off if there is the trade-off there? You know, would you get, could you reduce the scale and massing if you were able to do off-site parking? And would the neighborhood be okay with that? Because I know initially they were concerned about, about not having enough parking. But I think in the end, I almost feel like maybe we have too much parking possibly that we're trying to fit to meet zoning requirements. So that, that would be just a comment. And then, and then my last one, I guess I would agree in some ways with Don, where I think this is an appropriate location as opposed to being on State Street. I, I question in some ways with whether this would be considered in addition, when you look at the Secretary of Standards, Standards or whether, because it is such a separate structure and, and it's so far away from that historic structure that, that I wonder if it sort of has to follow those same scalability requirements that, or recommendations of the Secretary of Interior Standards state. And then, and that, that would be just my personal opinion is that I think being back on this part of the site actually makes it, gives more prominence to that historic structure. And in, in some ways, I see this more as an addition to the 1980s addition as opposed to an addition to the historic structure. So, so that's the way that I've been looking at it and analyzing it from my personal perspective.
Matt?
Yes?
I just want to, Andy, if you could go to the section, I just want to address Tanya's initial comment relative to the height of the first proposal versus, or the last proposal versus this one. So the height of this one to the eve is 25.5, yes, 25.5. And the height to the, to the eve line or the parapet was 29.8. So that gives you the idea of where this eve line versus the parapet was before. It's four feet shorter.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. All right, I think we're ready for, Tanya, you're finished, correct?
I'm all set, yeah, thank you.
Great. Let's move to another planning board member, please. We haven't heard from Ann or... Ann, would you like to speak?
Here I am. I guess I, I really do like the change and focus on the design very much. My only continuing disappointment simply reflects all the comments we heard from the neighborhood relative to, you know, size and massing. And, you know, I think the architect has articulated, you know, how to fit program requirements and zoning requirements, et cetera. I just wish there could be a solution to that. Maybe Tanya's idea about the parking might have provided something. I don't know if it's too late for that. So yes, I very much like the redesign. But I'm sorry that, that the neighbors are still, you know, unhappy with, with this in their neighborhood.
Thank you, Ann. All right, let me comment first for myself. I do believe this is moving in the right direction. And I'm glad Ann brought that up. And there've been some allusions to that from other members about the, the size of the whole, or the effect and the impact on the neighborhood of this addition that while it visually is trying to fit in, is still a big change from the parking lot, an open parking lot. And I appreciate that. Whether it could be made to be more amenable to neighbors with a different design, we haven't seen that yet. And I appreciate that the bank has certain requirements for how it wants to use the building and the number of employees they want to have on the site. And the city so far has required that you have all your parking on site. And that forces the massing and the scale that we're seeing. I do believe that from the concept design, we've seen some indication that when we get more details, that, that, that sense of a big thing in your neighborhood is going to be a little bit adjusted. I think you've taken on some ideas from other members that you're going to consider. I want to add to that, has to do with the windows. I'm not sure in any of our discussions yet, we've talked about how these windows looking into the garage are going to look from the street. Now, I think that's the first question I have for Chris. Is the new pro, is a new design meant to cover up the garage as the previous windows were going to open into it? And if that's the case, how do you get ventilation into the garage?
So the design intent of the windows is that you're looking into occupied people space only. There would be no windows that open visually to see anything that looks, anything remotely like a garage. That's, that's the design intent of this proposal. Where in, it truthfully was the design intended in the previous proposal as well, except those windows would have been spandrel glass, something that was not, you couldn't see through, but still looked like glass. These will be true windows that look into true program space. That, that's our design intent. That's what we're trying to accomplish. And the ventilation issue is... is something that is a technical issue that we're now going to have to solve. On a number of other projects, we've done ventilation through the garage door. We've had perforated garage doors that are, I mean, you would never see the perforations from within 20 feet of it. So there are technical solutions that are very low-profile, that you don't see, that you don't hear. And we will undertake finding the right solution for ventilating that garage. You know, this is not something we haven't dealt with on other projects. And we feel like we can do it pretty elegantly.
Okay, that's reassuring. But I'm also concerned, as other people have mentioned, about the noise in general. Where, I guess that will come in the more of the detail. So I'd like you to consider as much audio auditory buffering as possible for any of the mechanicals having to do with this building. I heard at least one neighbor talk about being quite far away from the existing mechanicals and being able to hear them today. The other thing I wanted to pick up on, because I was curious about it as well, is the, could you speak to the view even in the conceptual design from Garden Street?
Yeah, I can. The view from Garden Street would be broken up into two masses as well. So as you see, the connection to the 80s building is a brick mass that then transitions to a house-scaled gabled mass with another reveal separating the two so that from the backyards of the people in Garden Street, they're not looking at one long, you know, featureless brick facade. But then they would be looking at a whole series of buildings that are generally the same scale as their house. That's, again, the design intent. The design intent is to make this feel like a cluster of house-sized buildings so that, you know, if you're in your backyard, it's not a surprising, surprisingly large thing that you're looking at. You know, from some people's backyards, there might be a brick facade. In some people's backyards, they'll see something that's more clambered. That is, and there's also a garden fence, you know, it's what, six-foot-tall garden fence that separates those properties. So we'd really be talking about, what does the upper floor of these buildings look like? And, you know, they will look like in the wood clambered clad portion, they would have very much residential windows that are activated by whatever the program is going on up there. And in the brick, they have a different style of window, but generally the same scale. And they would also be activated by what's going on inside the building there, too. So they're not dead facades. They're active, you know. And, you know, in general, the same approach that we're taking on Prospect and Otis is what we're taking on the Garden Street side, which is break this into multiple pieces so it doesn't feel like one large, undifferentiated thing. I will make one comment about the acoustics. With the addition of this buffer zone, I mean, this is what we call it in the plan. If, Andy, if you could go to the ground floor plan real quick, I think it's slide three. Thank you. That yellow zone and orange zone there is about as good as an acoustic buffer as you could ever get on Prospect and Otis from there, because it's two walls that would be, you know, acoustically dense and in space in between, which is even better. We would endeavor to make sure that all the enclosing walls around it are very acoustically solid, including proposing possibly not having any windows at all along the Garden Street property line. And to say that is to say that we heard in previous meetings that acoustics is an issue. And I would say that that this scheme is quite an improvement to that just by the adding of space. I mean, the people who may be occupying whatever rooms end up down there are going to be, you know, they're going to be more acoustically, they're going to be closer to the noise that might happen in the garage than anyone around the street. The mechanical stuff, the mechanical noise, we have an opportunity with this scheme that if you look at the section, I think that's two slides next, we have the opportunity of placing some of the louder things. And I don't think many of the things we have loud, but in between the gables, we actually have quite a nice area here. Yeah, thank you very much, to place some of those things there, which would be acoustically shielded from either side of the building. So again, this is conceptual design. And we're talking about high, you know, very conceptual, high-level stuff. But, you know, when we're designing something like this, this is what we're thinking of, of where things like a fan might be able to go on the roof or something like that.
Madam Chair, if I could just follow up with what Christopher had earlier said. They design by a 365-degree live model. And we have that available. And hopefully, at the next meeting, when there are more details, perhaps the chair and the board will work with the planning director to allow that live model to be used and shown, which every single one of these views can be seen from.
Okay, we'll take that into consideration. Thanks for the reminder. I just wanted to say two other items about the conceptual design. I too like the idea of a more of a modern entrance. Good historical development within, new development in historic areas is good to have some reference to the historical, obviously. But as has been stated, we don't want everything to look like a replica. And then you can't tell the difference between what's really old and what's more modern. So I like the idea of the loggia and the kind of entryway there. And I'm also beginning to think that the issue of subordination of this addition is more one of visual than actual dimensions. And I think we need to take that into consideration when we look from State Street, which is where the historic building is located. And the whole idea, I believe, behind the subordination of an addition is not to overwhelm the existing historic structure. And given the distance away from it and the relative sizes of the two, it would seem, and this would be really important to see from State Street, that the historic structure and the space around it has been preserved. And I hope the Historical Commission will help us on that to understand where we can, as one member, I think, was mentioning, trying to deviate from those standards in a literal interpretation and look at this as the unique site that it is and try to understand how we are meeting those standards and meeting the requirements of all of the zoning that controls this project to help make it work. So that leads me to thinking about the next iteration. We definitely are interested, I think, from what we've heard. We've heard from all planning board members, correct? I think so. I don't hear anybody screaming that I've missed you. So I guess we've all spoken. We're looking forward to seeing more details to both what you've been planning and what you've heard tonight. And Chris and I believe Attorney Mead have probably been taking notes. I know Attorney Mead is very good at that. And if I'm correct, could I ask for your list of issues or design features based on tonight's discussion that you will be looking to either consider or incorporate into the next iteration?
Bonnie, I have a significant list. And I have been taking very detailed notes. Do you really want me to go through all of them?
Well, I want to make sure that you've hit the high points of, not only what the planning board has mentioned, but if at all possible, to consider the neighbors' concerns as well. In fact, we reflect both the need to balance the desires of the applicant, the immediate abutters, and the community as a whole. So I don't mean to give short shrift to the comments of the neighbors, even though some of them may be more extreme than you feel you can accommodate. I just want to make sure that your list is dealing with the major issues that have been brought up tonight. Could you summarize them by any chance?
I can. And I certainly took as many notes on the neighbors' comments and also members of the Historic Commission's comments as I did the board's comments. So kind of starting from the top, you know, I'm going to do a kind of the size, scale, massing comments from the neighbors. But in addition, particularly from some of the Historic Commission members, the relationship of the eve line and the distance between the windows on the first and second floor. There have been some comments related to the, related to differentiation between the buildings, perhaps maybe by using color and detail and potentially adding some elements like doorways on the first floor at appropriate places. There have been comments related to the windows and their placement. The, there have been issues related to looking again at the Prospect Street sidewalk. There's comments on both sides of this. But there were some comments related to potentially where those, where if any of the landscaping is going to be able to be fit in. The, again, I'm just looking down my list. There's some comments on the gable end and the height, the need for a shadow study, which we're happy to provide a discussion about the acoustics. I know Chris has addressed that. But I think that we're going to be able to provide some more actually engineering information related to the acoustics, specifically the operations of the garage, which are now, as Chris noted, more muffled, if you will, if there was any noise to begin with. And then the location will be taking care in the location, the mechanicals, which is, you know, we haven't even gotten to yet related to the design. So the, again, we talked about the entrances. And I think those, you know, breaking up the planes and the colors and the details, we have some of those things to work on. I think that in general, those are the, without going through every single person's comments, those are the bigger ones.
Okay, I'm going to go back to the planning board members and ask, if you think of the big issues, would you add to that list? Other than the request for the 3D model technology to see all of this in more realistic views.
The only one I didn't hear Lisa directly address was the corner of Prospect and Otis. And the question as to whether or not a one-story should be there.
Okay, yep, the location of that breakup. Yep, got it. We have that. So Madam Chair, there was a suggestion in the staff report that we might ask for continuance to your next meeting. But I would suggest that we need a continuance at least until September 16th at this point. And we'll be in touch with the planning director if we'll make that meeting. But I would request a continuance number 16.
Okay, that seems to make sense. So is there any further discussion before I take a motion for a continuance? All right, I will ask for a motion, please, to continue to September 16th. Don moves. Yep, Don, thank you. Do I have a second?
A second, MJ.
Thank you. And before we take the vote, let me just reinforce that the continuance date must include, of course, time for the Historical Commission to put on its agenda and hear and review your detailed design before we get it.
We understand that. And at this point, we're going to shoot for September 16th, knowing that. But as I said, depending on how we progress through this, because we also have to work on the site plan and make sure that that's all working. And as we've talked about, the internal operations in the core of the building. So we'd like the continuance to the 16th, understanding all of those obligations. And we'll be in touch with the planning director in our ability to meet that.
Okay, great. All right, I'll take roll call then on continuance to September 16th. Beth?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. And, oh, Alden?
Abstain.
Yeah, okay. So thank you very much. And we'll see you when we see you, if not on the 16th, at a date to be determined.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and members of the board.
All right. That's our only public hearing for tonight. We move on to our next agenda item, which is a minor site plan review for Zero Parker Street. It's been continued since 7/1. And they've asked for a continuance to September 19th, which we'll take right now because we have no reason not to. May I have a motion to continue it?
I'll make a motion to continue.
Leah makes the motion and a second.
A second.
Ann, I heard Ann first, sorry. Ann will second it.
Bonnie, I think you said September.
September 19th.
Yeah, it says August 19th.
Request to continue. Oh, 8/19.
Yeah, and I think the next meeting is September 16th, is that right?
Where are we? No, there is.
We have a meeting on the 19th of August. But so is that what they want? Or do they want September 16th?
No, I guess they want August. I'm sorry, I said it wrong. It's August.
Yep.
It's, I'm sorry. Motion to continue to August 19th. We had a motion from?
Yes, Leah.
Leah. And a second from Ann?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, I apologize. Alden?
Abstain.
Beth?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So that'll be August 19th for that minor site plan review. All right, the next one is the 2020 Open Space and Recreation Plan update. That's for Andy.
Yeah, thank you. Actually, we apologize it's on the agenda. We don't actually need to further discuss unless the board members have questions. The council, this plan has now been submitted to the state for review. We're waiting for their comments back. They might have a few tweaks, but it's all in good format and order for them based on the requirements they outline in good detail. So the only question at this point is whether or not the city council has any changes or comments, and they have any committee, the Planning and Development Committee of the City Council. So we'll have a couple, one or more meetings with them to go through that, but we're not expecting to need anything else, you know, from the planning board for this, unless members have questions.
Okay, we'll move right on to the next item, which is correspondence from Anna Jake's operating room expansion. You want to just tell us about their phased approach?
Yeah, so members got a copy of the materials that were provided, and actually those were also provided to the city council. So they wanted to let us know that based on, I think in part on the COVID situation and their need to adapt, they are phasing in the construction that the planning board had approved and the city council had approved there. I'm not sure if planning board members have any particular concerns or questions about that. I know that Rick in particular had looked into those plans maybe in more detail. I'm not sure if anybody has any particular questions. We didn't, I don't think I saw any particular issues with that myself, but I think the hospital is trying to make sure, as good neighbors, that, you know, the city council, the planning board, and everyone involved could know, you know, how they were going about things, so no one was surprised if they saw, you know, phased construction versus everything all at once.
Rick, did you have something you wanted to?
I just, a question for Andy. The request, the correspondence was a little bit vague, I thought. It, I mean theoretically, they could do the first phase and then come back in 10 years to do the second phase, unless I missed something. So I'm just wondering if there's any time limit on this.
Yeah, I think that really comes down to case law. So I think, you know, if we see someone who's extending beyond a two-, three-year period for doing the construction of this project, then we're going to be back into a question of whether they need to come back and get a formal extension from the planning board versus having to refile again. So I would not say that they have the opportunity to go 10 years to do that. You know, for instance, your permits call out a two- to three-year period, and, you know, if we were seeing them go beyond that, we would direct them to come back to ask for an extension or refile in order to have valid permits to continue doing, you know, the remainder of the construction.
So that would be, I was wondering about that. So I saw the, I looked at the approval and saw there wasn't a time limit, but you're correct, the building permit, you have to complete that within a two-year period, correct? So that's, that is the, that would be the guiding piece, right?
Yeah, we would consider that to be essentially, you know, at that point, they'd be abandon the project and they, you know, unless they had gained an extension through the board, timeframe extension from the planning board, we would tell them they'd have to go back and refile again.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Good, thank you for the update on that, and I like the comment that they're being good neighbors, because they really are, and we can use this as an example for future reference. Approval of the minutes for 7/15. Let's take a motion and then see if there's any discussion. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve as amended.
Okay, that's Rick, and a second?
Second, Anne.
Anne, thank you. And amendments, I've made some changes that are pretty much grammatical in clarification. Rick or Don, who also I know have looked at it, or anyone else, want to make any comments about their requested edits?
I think it's all clarification. I would like to comment, though, that I like these minutes with the members identified by name. It's very helpful.
Good. Anybody else want to comment on them? Okay, I'll take roll call on approval. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
I was not at the meeting, so abstain.
Thank you. Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Leah, were you at that meeting?
No.
You're abstaining. All right, thank you, Tanya, you woke me up on that one. Okay, was that Rick? MJ?
Yes.
Yep, Don?
Yes.
And Bonnie, yes. Okay, minutes are done. Thank you, Linda. All right, we now have further discussion of Section 6C, and we have some bullet points requested. We've requested a draft, even rough, on the accessory dwelling units to see where there might be overlap. That's not ready yet, so you were given as part of the staff report some bullet points, and Rick very kindly pulled out bullet points to be consistent on 6C, so that we can just talk about them conceptually and not get lost in the weeds of the language. And I think one of the major questions we probably ought to start out with, if you don't mind jumping around, was an idea I think that Don brought up, the concern that applicants could go for a 6C, and we wanted to avoid the situation where an applicant could go for a 6C for two full-scale units on a lot, and then come back for accessory dwelling units on each one. And because we don't have the new ADU amendment yet, we've got language proposed for the 6C that would restrict that. Does that work for everybody for now?
Bonnie, is that, would it be restricting ADUs completely on those? Or, and I guess my only concern is that, you know, the ADU, I think part of the, part of the reasoning on that for us to pass that is to allow for some more affordable type of units, and would we, by eliminating it altogether, are we sort of eliminating the possibility of maybe some instances where it would make sense, and it would allow us to provide some units that could be affordable?
Well, I think, and Rick, you've thought through this, and Andy as well, I think the idea is that the ADU amendment, when it comes through, will do exactly what you're saying, and that will be the major vehicle for getting more affordable market rate, affordable units out there, that the 6C would remain more having a second subordinate, but second dwelling unit on one lot. Is that the idea?
Bonnie, just for the office anyway, I'll just say that it wasn't necessarily, we weren't necessarily assuming that the 6C would need to preclude accessory dwelling units. I think Tanya's made a valid point that, you know, you may just as well want to have little a accessory units, you know, there if that results in more affordable units, even if they're not de-restricted. I don't take any particular stand from that, but I'm not sure that it's necessary to restrict it on 6Cs. It could be a large lot where 6Cs proposed, and maybe that additional dwelling unit isn't, you know, necessarily having an impact of any kind, but that's up to you and, you know, and the city council in terms of what you want to zone for. It's just, I'm not sure that that's something that the office felt was necessary as a restriction.
Well, that's actually incorporated into the rough draft that, Rick, you wrote up, where you could convert another building, but it would be restricted in size.
Yeah, so I think that the, this kind of just shows again the difficulty of trying to fix 6C without also doing accessory dwelling units at the same time. And I, and as we talked about at the last, our last discussion on this, I think we're just going to have to accept that this is only going to be the first pass on 6C, and once we see what the accessory dwelling unit proposal is, then we can adjust the 6C to be compatible with it. I personally don't have a, you know, ultimately, in the long run, I don't have a problem with an accessory dwelling unit internal to a single-family dwelling, to the single-family dwellings on a 6C development. In other words, if we had two single-family dwellings on a lot, I wouldn't have a problem with a completely internal accessory dwelling unit. I would have a problem with two single-family dwellings and two detached accessory structures also having accessory dwelling units. And so I think, once we see what the ultimate accessory dwelling unit proposal is, whether it includes detached accessory dwelling units as well as attached accessory dwelling units, we may want to look at how that works. But I think for the, I would say, until we know what the accessory dwelling unit proposal is, we can exclude them from the 6C, and then we can add them back in once we see what the accessory dwelling unit proposal is. That would be my, I'd prefer to be doing it all at once, but if we have to do it sequentially, that would be the way I would prefer, propose to do it.
Yeah, this is Andy. One other thing I would add to that is, you know, again, I realize there's some interest and some overlap in some of this subject area, but I'm not necessarily convinced that it's necessary to have the accessory dwelling unit ordinance in order to finalize what particular changes the planning board thinks are appropriate to the 6C section. The, you know, you can, even as a planning board, if you're issuing the 6C special permit, if you feel that it's that big of an issue, you can actually place a condition on the 6C special permit that no accessory units can be added in the accessory structures, or no accessory structures can be added without coming back to the board, because remember that the site plan involved with the 6C is part of that approval. So I guess my point is just that you have the ability to restrict that if you feel it's necessary, and you can, if you want to propose to the council to adopt a change to the 6C section now, that, as you pointed out, Rick, would restrict the accessory dwelling units if they're, you know, later allowed by the council and some other ordinance amendment, and then, as you pointed out, you know, go back and allow it again. But it's not that you, necessarily that you couldn't restrict that additional accessory structure in some way by virtue of the special permit you're already imposing on the property when they come in for permitting.
But this is Bonnie. If you do that, you're just talking about amending the existing one. We're talking about revising the whole 6C right now, and that how we handle accessory dwelling units is part of that concept. I don't think any of us from our previous discussion wants to just tack on some stuff to the existing 6C. Have I got that right, everybody?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I think the bullets that were developed were well-done and reflected our last conversation.
What was the, I'm trying to pull up the bullet point list right now, I thought I had it printed out. What was the bullet on ADUs in the, what was the bullet point regarding that?
Bonnie, do you want me to summarize some of that?
No, we just.
No, I'm trying to pull it up right now, but I guess from my perspective, I mean, I'm kind of with Andy. I feel like if we are revising it, I would be more apt to leave it open, not prohibit ADUs on 6C properties, but instead sort of give us the discretion on deciding whether it makes sense or not, because there are some areas where it may make sense, and there's some that it's not. I agree, Rick, that it probably would be more sense that they would be attached as opposed to detached, but I guess, does that mean that if a 6C property with a garage wanted to put an ADU on top of the garage, is that considered a detached, or is that considered a detached ADU?
Only if the garage is attached.
But I think, I think that the way we've talked about the 6, see, this is, again, right now, there's no such thing as an ADU, right? It's only an in-law apartment. There is no such thing as an ADU in Newburyport. So the way we've drafted or thought about the 6C is to say that 6C could allow two residential dwellings on a lot. So if you had a detached garage and you wanted to convert that to an ADU, that would by definition violate the 6C, because then you'd have three residential dwellings on a lot. So, again, it's how we, if we decide we want that in the future, if we decide we want to have an apartment on top of a garage, we can do that, but if we, but it wouldn't work with the language we're talking about right now. You'd have to go back and rewrite the 6C to specifically say, oh, by the way, we won't count an apartment in a garage as a residential structure. So I think.
You could just go back and amend, we could, I mean.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that would be fine, then. I guess you could, you could say two units, and then, and then when the ADU goes back, because there may be other parts of the zoning ordinance that need to be changed, too, and this will just flag that as one of those.
So I'm just, that's what I was saying to begin with, is that since we don't know what the ADU is going to be, we just have to bite the bullet and say, we'll adopt a new 6, or propose a new 6C now, and then sometime in the future, we'll have to revise it to be consistent with the accessory dwelling unit ordinance whenever that's adopted.
There's one other comment, and this is Andy, there's one other comment I'd like to add about the ADU amendment. Part of the reason why, at least, and the councils are welcome to propose ordinance changes, obviously, planning board can recommend things like that to the council. One of the reasons why I am not comfortable just yet suggesting that we change or incorporate the zoning change for accessory dwelling units is because a couple of days ago, we've had discussions with the water, the city engineer, they're having another assessment done of the city's water capacity, and I guess the sewer capacity as well. I'm not familiar with all the details of their study, but one of the concerns I'd like to make sure we're taking into account properly is, when we think about growth and build-out of the city, everything becomes finite at some point, so we can't, you know, for instance, depend on infinite, you know, future growth for our fiscal, you know, viability of the city. We have to at some point assume there's going to be a end to growth. The water supply also is also limited at some point. Now, the, I think prior studies might have suggested there's adequate capacity into some point in the future, but that apparently is being reassessed now by the Department of Public Services. So one of the things I would like to make sure, at least, is if the council is going to adopt something that allows accessory dwelling units, and if we, at least the planning office, are going to recommend or support something like that, I'd like to make sure that wherever we're accounting for growth, whether it be the 40-yard district, or Waterfront West, or infill development, that we're not suddenly ballooning the potential there that would exceed what is actually we're capable of supporting. So I'd like to hear a little bit more before recommending, you know, or seeing amendments adopted that might allow an onslaught of, you know, other types of units, just making sure that we're not creating other problems down the road, so.
Well, if you look at the language that we actually had in the draft from Rick, it did say that you could convert a garage or a carriage house, and it had limits. It said, "In such case, the converted building shall not be increased in height nor expanded outward other than by dormers' porches or decks and not exceeding 300 square feet in total." I don't know about that 300 square feet in total, but that effectively says you're not creating, your second unit is actually that conversion, and we're not saying anything about having an accessory dwelling unit. We could be, just be silent on that in the 6C.
I wouldn't hold up accessory dwelling units while still, you know, allowing all other development, because it might, you know, tap our water supply. I just think accessory dwelling units are a great idea, and we should move ahead with it, particularly since the water issue is not even quantified.
Can I just ask, are they allowed in all residential, I mean, what's proposed about the ADUs? Would they be allowed in all residential areas, even in single-family?
See, this gets into the details of it that Andy doesn't want to talk about.
No, it's not, but I don't want to talk about, it's just there hasn't, we haven't reached, we never reached a real consensus, I think, as far as the details of accessory dwelling units with the zoning advisory committee, and of course, as we were trying to package up a whole comprehensive, had to rewrite the zoning ordinance for the council, which is a monumental project and difficult to finalize when we're being pulled in a million different directions, and it's a lengthy document that requires changes every time you touch one paragraph, another section changes or needs to be adjusted. So the bottom line, I guess, is we never reached a consensus over what those provisions would be, but there wasn't any expectation, that I recall, that we would be prohibiting accessory dwelling units in a single-family district. So as far as I know, the understanding I had, anyway, was that in the residential districts, those would be allowed. What we needed to figure out was, and again, this is, this is ultimately up to the council, but the question is, what are we recommending, is whether or not we will only allow accessory dwelling units in a two-family district, a three-family district, the single-family district, or otherwise. I welcome the planning board's thoughts or preferences as far as what that should be, so that if we're going to draft something, we have a good consensus from the start. I think, you know, one of the problems I think we've had several times in the past that I've been here, is we've started to draft language for things before we've agreed upon conceptually what makes sense and what we agree is the intended result. I think it's preferable if we have those discussions first and come to some agreement, rather than drafting something going around in circles. I mean, this 6C discussion for perspective has actually been revisited several times in the years that I've been working with the planning board here, and the board has several times has put that aside and then come back to it again, and there's been discussion, originally the discussion was whether or not the public benefits were sufficient, whether or not the affordable housing component needed to be spelled out more because the contribution.
But I think in the new draft that Bonnie and Rick have put together, we've kind of taken all that discussion away. I mean, I think the points that have been developed here are what our recommendations are, and we've taken away the affordable, the, you know, all those other issues.
Well, I guess that's the question for the planning board, I mean, those are Rick's bullets. Is the planning board's consensus that this is everything? If so, the office can draft something, but it's not, I don't know whether that's, are you saying that that you think is sufficient already, the bullets that Rick put together?
This is Don, if it's okay, I apologize, but you're right, it's obviously not everyone's opinion. I'm of the opinion, and I think I've shared that before, which was a question, actually, and I think, I guess, has been clarified, Rick, is when I saw the one section where it says permanent preservation restriction on existing historical significant building, so. So I think what I'm hearing now is confirming my interpretation that if there was no historically significant building, then they can do a 6C without any other compensation. And I appreciate what Alden said one time, well, you get some incremental tax-based revenue. But perhaps I'm just more of the financial person, and I personally am not in favor of this unless there is some other carve-outs. If it's not historical preservation, I think there was agreement that the open space is a bit nebulous, but surely some type of funding component. And I understand, then you get into the issue of quantification where historical preservation is binary. But nonetheless, I actually am not in favor of this as it's written. But hey, I get it. You just need a majority. So thank you for listening.
No, no, that's not true, Dawn. You're bringing up legitimate concerns, and I think we need to consider it. See, what you're saying is if there were a building that was eligible for permanent restriction, preservation restriction, that would suffice as a benefit. But if there isn't, we need to consider something else.
Well, that's what, right, exactly. Rick has written, if it's historic preservation, that suffices. But what's not addressed is if it's not historical building, it's, what happens then? And I think what I just heard is my interpretation is you just passed the 6C. And I personally, as you just said, Bonnie, I think there should be some incremental benefit to the city.
Okay, so let's, let's figure out what that might be.
Assuming you guys agree, maybe you guys are okay without any other benefit. It's just my thought.
Are there others who feel the same way Dawn does?
I'm not opposed to it. I just can't, I don't know what other benefit there would be. Unless you're asking, unless it's a simple matter of making a monetary contribution to the city of some sorts, but, you know, some kind of extraction like that. But I'm not sure, I don't know what, what it would be that would be related to the development that you would be asking.
Rick, if I may address that, I think in one sense, perhaps the analogy is incorrect, and you and Tony have more experience. But again, as a developer, who used to contribute to cities, communities when I was building all the power plants, not, not commercial structures, et cetera, there's, there's development. I mean, you're paying for fire trucks, you're providing some type of development funding. It's, in my opinion, it's no different than in Boston, and they're getting some type of contribution for whatever it is. And you could classify, categorize it, name it what you want. The bottom line is there's some extra benefit, albeit monetary to the city. You're right. So you hit the nail on the head, Rick.
But maybe it's a contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund, you know, and it's substantial.
Doesn't this imply that we're allowing them to do a 6C? I thought the whole idea was that we were going to allow 6Cs in situations where we thought that improved the property, where we thought it was a good design and where it actually made sense to do it, rather than accept the notion that we're going to let them do it. It's going to sort of compromise the lot. So as a penalty for compromising the lot, you're going to give the city some money. Or, you know, I thought we were going to base this on somehow try and structure this so that it was only done in situations where it made sense from a, from a design or planning perspective.
So if we were to look back at the one we just approved and hypothesize that that building was not historic, would we want to approve that? Or, or would we want to say that we will only let that second building be built on the other street if we get something else out of it? I guess that's the basic question.
Are you talking about the one that, can you remember?
342.
Merrimack.
Merrimack Street and Merrimack Court, the one behind.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, for me, that was a situation where that, from a design perspective, made sense. There was an empty lot. It faced a street all on its own. I mean, it seemed like a single family belonged there.
Yes. That was my, that was my, that was the reason that I proposed not asking for anything else, because I wouldn't want to put obstacles in the way of that type of development. I guess that's, that's my concern.
But we did get a historic restriction on that property. And to me, that's a big plus. That's a very visible site on Merrimack Street. We've got a lot of nice historic buildings there. They're going to take an addition off and restore it. I just think our, our history with historic architecture in our city is well worth preserving by those kinds of restrictions.
And I don't see any, I don't see any problem with that. What we're trying to figure out is if that house had not been historic with the findings that we have proposed here, that it fits the neighborhood, it's got frontage on its own street, it's a good, good infill, is that good enough? Or is Dawn is suggesting, this is a special permit. You should have to do something other than just make a nice house on another, on the lot and get a financial benefit for it for free.
Is that generally our rule about special permits? Is that to get a special permit, you have to?
Yeah, Leah, I'm glad you asked that question. Can I just clarify, you know, the, for those board members who aren't intimately familiar with this particular section of the ordinance, this ordinance is really saying two things. It's calling for the planning board to look at the typical special permit criteria about, you know, is it appropriate, right, in the neighborhood, in the context? Is there some sort of impact on the neighborhood? And then also, is there a public benefit? And the typical public benefits for 6Cs over the years, and it's called on the ordinance, the typical categories are open space contributions, which I think there've been very few of those. There's only been a handful, maybe one or two, really. The affordable housing component, which again, has been limited. We haven't really seen many wholesale units created. There's been, you know, discussion of maybe a couple thousand dollars here or there, but that's been limited in terms of contributions from 6Cs. And then there's been the historic preservation one, which is the most common one. I think more recently, we've seen a lot of folks saying, we'll go to the historic commission, get them to confirm that the building is historic and is worthy of a preservation restriction. And then they circle back with the planning board and say, you've got, you know, a public benefit here. Will you give us a 6C special permit? So the special.
But we've also recently turned those down when we thought that it was not in keeping with the neighborhood like the other one on Merrimack Street.
Exactly, which is why.
So we have the right to determine, even beyond the preservation. I guess, to answer the question, if that last one we did didn't have the historic building, it was another building, I would have still wanted that. It just made so much sense. You had two different streets going there. It wasn't, you know, the infill, one house behind it. It was, it just made a lot of sense to me, and I would not have required a public benefit. The fact that we got historic preservation restriction out of it, I think it's a huge plus. But to say, okay, if you're going to do this, you've got to throw 50,000 in the Affordable Housing Trust, I don't know how you measure that.
But what I, what I.
That's just me.
Yeah. What I was thinking was, I probably didn't put the language right on when I said, you have to give us something in return. I think about the other special permits we have. So open space residential development. They get to cluster all these houses together and get more, more housing, and then have open space. And the city gets the open space because most, almost all of them, there are a few exceptions, there's public access to that open space. So this is a quote unquote benefit designed into that special permit. Well, the overlay district is a special permit. We're already preserving, you know, historic character downtown. So that's where I got the idea that a special permit is special, that you have to meet certain criteria. And up to this point, we've been asking for something in return. As long as those criteria are clearly stated, because they were there all along, we just haven't been using them very well, because we've been so focused on the benefit. Unless we can come up with a benefit that's related to the land, the land development, something that they're doing and we want to encourage for the city, I guess I'm going to back off the need for a benefit other than historic preservation. And we just have to have some sort of a, if somebody comes up with a brainstorm on that before we submit this for consideration as a, for adoption, we go with it with the findings.
Can we, and I should know this and I don't, can we request a contribution to the Community Preservation Trust, like to the, because that actually has open space, affordable housing, and historic as part of their mission?
You're talking about the CPC, Community Preservation, that's a tax on the city.
Yeah, no, they don't take donation. There's not a separate, I don't know that.
Yeah, additional funds can be added into that account. I mean, it is, you know, you could work with a developer who proposes to provide funds into that versus for affordable housing, certainly, if you wanted to amend the ordinance to explicitly call that out. But yeah, that, right now, the ordinance says a clear public benefit derived from the proposed project, including but not limited to. And then it lists those three things I mentioned earlier. So it's not prohibited that they could donate to the CPA funds, which could then be distributed by the council if it'd be on a project.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that that covers the three areas that the ordinance initially had stated. I mean, I think that historic preservation is important, and I think, but I think that, that it's not to say, I agree with Dawn, there could be, we could also say, I mean, they are, the developer of the site is getting a significant increase in value on the property by creating two single-family homes as opposed to a multifamily, you know, one multifamily. So, and maybe it is going to the Affordable Housing Trust if the preservation, if we don't feel like the historic preservation piece is enough, given that that's, you know, that's a big issue in town right now.
Well, that's where it goes, is this still doesn't solve the problem of how we, how we create it, you know, what we say it is. Is it a percentage of the development cost? Is it a flat fee that gets reviewed every two years? This is where the challenge is, whether it goes to.
Yeah, I think a percentage of the, of the, of the value of the property. I mean, certainly, they're increasing the value of property if they're building a second structure. But that would seem to make the most sense instead of a set number.
But how is that evaluated before, before it's finished?
Yeah.
I mean, and this is a recommendation to the city council. So the city, I mean, we could say that, you know, based on, and they could decide sort of what might be the appropriate, whether it is the Community Preservation Fund or whether it's, you know, the Affordable Housing Trust.
No, I'm still trying to differentiate where it goes and what it is. And I don't think we're clear on what it is that we would ask for. Dawn, did you want to try something on that?
Yeah, actually, I think I did send it to Rick, but I probably didn't get distributed to the rest of the planning board when Rick was drafting something up. And with respect to what it is, and MJ, it's not perfect, but what I said it would be, and we'll get to the percentage, a percentage, and I think I put five or 10% of bracketed, of the, of the original property value two years previous. So there was no necessarily gaming of appealing a decision or tax or something like that. So I was trying to also circumvent someone trying to game the system. So I took, to your point, MJ, it was the assessed value. And I threw out, you know, 5% or something like that. So on a 700,000, maybe that's too big. So on a $700,000 assessed value, you're going to put a second structure, it's probably worth another 700,000. My guess is the developer's going to make a couple hundred thousand dollars, maybe on way off base. And it was 5%, that'd be $35,000. So, you know, we get a third, he gets two thirds. And I agree, one could argue that that's risk-adjusted returns, which are different. But I was just throwing a number out there and for everyone to comment on. But that's kind of where my head was at, MJ.
It seems if it's related to the property value, that makes the most sense. You know, the assessed value is always different than the appraised value, of course. But, you know, I mean, you can't ask for appraisal. So you have to go with the assessed value, I assume, if that's the direction.
And for clarification, because I'm really slow when it comes to all this numbers stuff, assessed value of the property once the second structure is on it, right?
That's what's hard to figure out, I would think.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, exactly. How do you come up with assessed value of the property? Dawn, you made some fast tap dancing there. Slow down for me.
To make it simple, I was suggesting the assessed value of the original property before the 6C. To keep it simple, and it was assessed, so we don't have to ask for appraisal, it's factual. And my, assuming one even agrees, then the only, I think, thing we would debate is percentage. I threw out 5%, maybe that's too high, that's too low. But I don't know. That's what I just threw out. Let's think about, guys.
And was, was that going towards the affordable housing? Or did you say, Dawn?
So, so Alden, I was trying to address Bonnie's question of water, whatever. But to your point, yes, I personally am a big advocate of affordable housing. I have no idea when we get the ADUs. And as we all know, the 6Cs are not ADUs, they're separate, standalone, you know, not to be, you know, very, very high level houses. So my thought would be the affordable, Alden, yeah.
Right, right. So one, one question I had trying to think about that is that if we had a development come in and we said, okay, you have, we'll let you do this development, but you have to provide a certain percentage of it as affordable housing, then what normally is that percentage that we're, that we, that is commonly looked at? Is that, is that a known thing?
Yeah, I think it's what, Bonnie, one in nine?
What are we talking about?
One in six.
One in six? Okay, thank you, Leah.
One in, one in six?
Yeah, no, a big development, yes. After six units, you have to give one affordable unit, because the idea is that they have made enough money on those other units that they can afford to put in an affordable one. The problem with the 6C is we never get that because you've only got two units. And.
Right.
They would lose their shirts if the second one were affordable. That's where I.
But maybe then, if it's one in six, then, then maybe the amount should be one-sixth of a cost of building an affordable unit as the cost. If you, if you're trying to say, you know, that's what a developer would do. So if we have, have, you know, so that if we end up with six buildings that are 6C, then you can have, afford to build an affordable unit.
No, I don't understand. Are you just using that as an example? Because a 6C is for two units on one parcel.
Right. But if you're saying they have to make a contribution to the affordable housing, then.
Ratio, basically.
Yeah, the ratio. Well, all he was saying was 5% too big or not. But I, it sounds like if you're requiring a developer to, once he has six and has to have one affordable, then if you have a developer building an additional unit, then it sounds like you would require him to have, to pay one-sixth of the cost of building an affordable unit.
One-sixth of the cost of the new structure.
Of building an affordable unit. So maybe, yeah, so maybe that's a percentage of the, of his, his cost. All I'm saying, I'm trying to get some comparable measure to a developer. So you're developing, you know, one additional unit with this, with this lot. And I tried to compare it to a larger development where you're requiring affordable housing. That's why I was trying, I was just trying to determine some sort of measure based on that.
Yeah. Isn't there, I mean, if they don't build it, can't they contribute for the cost for off-site with a larger development?
That's, we're talking about inclusionary zoning. I think they have to, I'm pretty sure they have to build it, right, Andy?
The unit?
Yeah. If you do an inclusionary unit, if you do an inclusionary zoning, which is what we're talking about.
The inclusionary ordinance was, you know, put in there basically to make sure the developers couldn't just, you know, pay out a small amount of funds. Because the part of the problem the city has is there's mobilization costs for trying to get those units built for us. So if the developer's already out there, there's an efficiency for them to build that additional unit. Whereas if they give us, you know, a percentage of that cost, or what they see as the net difference between the market rate and the affordable, it's actually not enough for us to do that because we have to mobilize for a construction project, and it's not spread over the rest of the project. So.
Yeah. But is there an assumed cost for what a unit would, what a unit of affordable housing would cost to build? Is there a number?
That's very hard to measure.
That's driven really by market, so it's hard to.
That's driven really by market, so it's hard to.
Say development land cost, it depends on the project. I think Don's approach is the simplest and and makes a lot of sense. I guess I have a suggestion. I think we keep going round and round and round on six Cs. And I thought we were in agreement to throw out the public benefit except for historic preservation. But if that's not the case, maybe a couple of people could get together, maybe Don, you know, you could be one of them to rework these bullet points because I don't think we're at a consensus anymore.
Let's first see how many people really think it's important that we move beyond findings. And the option to always have a requirement that we always have a preservation restriction if a historic and historic house is under consideration. So let's go back to Don's premise. Is he the only one who seriously would like to see benefit for other situations in addition to the findings? That it meets all the criteria for neighborhood and character and all of that. Who else is with Don and really feels that that's necessary to have a further benefit?
This is Tanya. I think that if I think historic preservation is important. I think that that these other issues are important too. So. And they were put in this ordinance for a reason. And so I'd be okay with with preserving it in some way. Some type of public benefit. So I wouldn't, I would think if we're going to have historic preservation in there, we should look at the other ones as well. So I think it either should be, we don't have any public benefit, including historic preservation. Or if we are, then we include, we can, we keep the other, the other two pieces or drop open space and just have just have affordable housing and historic preservation.
Knowing that affordable housing would have to be a contribution because it couldn't be built in most cases.
Yeah, and I think that it'd be, I would, and that might help actually to have a contribution. I think I would probably, I think we should maybe look to see what other communities are. I would say it's usually, I feel like it's maybe usually under 5%, so maybe like somewhere around 2% to 3%. If you're talking about of the assessed value.
Would you and Don want to spend some time on this?
I'm happy to work with Don on it.
Yeah, let's let's see what you come up with, just looking at this little piece of it.
Yeah, my thought on that is I would forget open space, A, we have a ton of it. And B, CPA funds it every year regardless. So I like the idea of the historic preservation or affordable housing.
I don't know why we, I mean. I would stick with having all three of them as options, just, I mean, we haven't, maybe we haven't had a case where the open space makes sense. But I would think there could be. And I mean, I think, you know, I, part of what we were trying to do, I think, was tighten up and not feel like in every case that there was a benefit. We needed to approve these, right, and to, you know, have some more restrictions on when it makes sense or more. Explanation of when we're likely to approve them. But I don't know why we would need to knock out the benefits. I think we can do both, have the benefits and tighten it up.
So Beth, let me push back on you. We've been working on a percentage contribution. To give the developer an option for affordable housing. You're thinking the same thing should be done for open space, but where would we put that money? Put it into CPA money?
Right, or I mean, if if someone is willing to put a restriction on property that they own, commit to something. I would think that something like that in exchange. Right, so you're saying that we could have, we could have, you could have like a, you know, what if there's a an area where you could build a park or maybe there's a connection that could be made to the rail trail or, you know, so there could be something they could do. And we just don't know based on the site. So there could be something, so it might be, you know, it might not be a contribution. It actually could just be, it could just be that they're creating, because isn't that what what the one over on Crow's Lane, like over, it's not called Crow's Lane anymore, but Colby Farm Lane, like that that property is is doing green space, right? That's part of their public benefit.
That's an open space development, so that's that's a different.
It is, but I'm just saying that there could be options like that with six C.
Right, but I think, I guess if you were to, my concern is that, you know, having things that are, clearly, we want to have, it's a historic building, we want it preserved. That's a, that's a, as Don said, that's a binary thing. So then the other question is, what are the other things? I don't think we have anything else that we've defined that is a is a real binary thing like that. So and I also have a concern that if we say that somebody with a historic building gets away with it by putting a preservation restriction on their building, which is essentially not a very, not very much of a cost at all. But we have a substantial cost for somebody who doesn't have a historic building. I think we run into trouble of treating similar applicants unequally. And so if we were going to ask for a financial contribution of any sort, I would, I would expect it to be asked of anybody who gets a six C. And I would still require historic historic preservation restriction on a building. And that, and I, and I just don't have this, I mean, I like, I like Don's suggestion. If we're going to have a financial contribution, I like Don's suggestion for its simplicity, that we, there's no question. Somebody coming in looks at their assessment from two years ago and can, you know, do the math and figure out what the contribution is. And they can decide whether it's worth it for them to come in and apply for a six C. I, I think that we run into trouble when we have, you know, somebody might get, somebody might be required to provide five acres of open space and somebody else might be required to, you know, put a certain amount into an open, into a housing fund. And somebody else might be able to, just as you say, make a connection to a rail trail. I think that it's treating people very unequally.
Then you could just have a percentage, Rick, to the, to like something like the Community Preservation Fund, which which covers all of those. And then I think, yeah.
So if you take Don's suggestion and say it goes to the Community Preservation Fund and everybody has to do it. Then then that's fine. I wouldn't be opposed to it. I would think it would reduce the number of six Cs we get, but we don't get that.
And I think I would be, I would be okay with that. I think. I agree with you, Rick, that that a preservation restriction is, is, you know, it doesn't really mean much because the developer is selling the property anyway, so it doesn't mean much to them. So maybe it's just that you need a preservation restriction and and this.
So I think, I think if you, if you, if you and Don want to draft a suggestion for that, that we could add on to this and we can decide whether we want to move forward with that.
All right, homework assignment. See, it does pay to go in circles. We're good. I'm a little hungry, but besides that, I don't think we're busy. I think we've come up with, I mean, we haven't closed it yet. And we'll understand better when they come up with the rationale for the percentage, if it's something we can live with. But I think we've made progress.
I think we're 95% of the way there on the actual language of the ordinance too, so.
Yeah.
We're close.
Okay, and and well, just leave the ADU until the powers that be want to deal with it or ask us for our opinion. I mean, we could have a session like this on that ordinance too, starting with the bullet points. But I don't want to do that now. And I don't want it to get mixed in with six C. So let's put six C to bed and then we'll see if anybody thinks our planning capability is good enough that we could handle accessory dwelling units sooner rather than later. How's that?
Wait.
Makes work for yourself.
Good idea.
Okay, so Donna and Tanya, do you want to set a date for when you want to come back to see us? Sorry, I'm treating you like applicants. When do you think you might be able to to give us some ideas on what you've been thinking about? Do you want to do that the first meeting in September? It's a month away.
Tanya, I'm okay with that and I'll give you a call or vice versa and we can figure. And I don't mind doing the grunt work, Tanya. I'm the retired guy and you're, you've got a job and a parent, so and you're, you you point me in the direction, I'll plum where you tell me to plum.
Okay, all right, well, yeah, so Don and I will, we'll do that and we'll get to the, we'll get something back by the first meeting in September. That should be fine, so.
Right, we don't even need a motion for that. We're just gonna take you at your word. It says potential zoning amendment, so I'm going to put six C on for that one. Okay. Any other updates from, not from me anyway, anything from the planning director?
No, thanks. I did, you know, I appreciate the discussion tonight on these, the six C ordinance. I mean, one thing I have talked to, I have talked to these one councillor about the possibility of sponsoring a zoning amendment. You know, we talk about planning issues and a planning issue that the city, I think, has is whether or not to allow further growth on the island, Plum Island. And so one of the things I'm suggesting that the city officials revisit is whether or not it makes sense to change the zoning. To be more consistent with what the original intention, I think of, that was supposed to be out there years ago when the sewer system was extended, which was to limit growth. And so I would argue that it's not in the city's best interest to continue to allow the type of growth that's happened out there on a continuing basis. So I'm recommending that basically that, you know, that's something that the council should consider, the water sewer department should weigh in on as far as whether or not they want to allow more bedrooms out there and so forth. Because it really hasn't been a curbing of the growth out there, as I think was originally intended. That is one issue that I'd like to see focus on in the coming months. In addition to all the, of course, other issues that are high priority to others, you know, the short term out the units is one right now that's, that needs to be processed and adopted in some format by the council with the Plainwoods input. But that Plum Island piece, I think, is one that, you know, while we're dealing with all these neighbored contextual things. I think it's also important for us to think about sustainability and whether or not it makes sense with sea level rise and storm surge increases in the coming years. Just as I think we need to protect our treatment plant as the most vulnerable, low lying facility we have in the city. I think we also need to consider whether or not it really makes sense to continue to allow the type of growth and development that's happening on the island. And some of the smaller homes out there are becoming quite large. So that's one thing I would put across your radar if you have thoughts on that.
Okay, I've got one update. Just a reminder. Tomorrow night, Rick and I are participating in the short term rental unit subcommittee or working group. And that is going to be revised amendment is going to be brought forward for a joint public hearing on August 19th. My sense is that we just might be discussing it that night. I don't, I can't promise you that we would put it off. I think they're very eager to get this out of the council and onto the floor for us to to have this joint public hearing. I don't know how much lead time you're going to have to review the revised document. I will push for, you know, the usual week before, but that would mean next Wednesday. It would have to be submitted because we only have two weeks till the next meeting. So.
It really should be posted right in advance so the public can see it before it goes to the public hearing.
That's right. It needs 14 days. So if it's on the agenda, Andy, has it been posted?
Just to be clear, the the zoning hearing is something that's required to be advertised. The new version of that, it can still come out of working session. So this is a continued public hearing. We readvertised it because we felt that it had been a long time, the COVID situation came into play. So that has been readvertised for that, what is it, the 19th? But but the new version of it that is a working document that comes out of that prior process does not require another notice, if that's the question.
But Andy, we have a, we have a new document that we're discussing. So is that, does that new document dated July, July 22nd, is that what is being advertised or is it the original one back from way, way, way back when?
Yeah, just to be clear again, the advertisement in the paper is not verbatim, the ordinance that's proposed. It's just a summary of what is being discussed, the scope of what is being discussed in the zoning amendment. So, you know, you wouldn't advertise the entire zoning ordinance if you were adopting an ordinance. What we do is we summarize the scope of what's being discussed. That way the public, if they're interested in that scope, can come and look at the details in greater detail.
But typically, I mean, it's it's common practice to to give the public in advance, look at what you're discussing. Is that?
Well, I agree. I have no, I agree with that completely. I mean, that, you know, certainly whatever time you as members feel you need. I think you may need to say, we haven't had enough time to review that. That's up to you. I'm just trying to just distinguish between what's statutorily required versus what you may feel is appropriate, which I would agree with.
Actually, what I was, what I was referring to was the fact that there's a document out there that I'm not sure the public knows about. So it would be, wouldn't it be helpful for the public hearing for the public to know about that document?
Well, I agree with that, but I think the intention of the councillors who had edited it most recently and, and, you know, basically forwarded to this working group, the intention there was to come back out of that working group with a cleaner version, potentially other revisions that might have been made to that before sending it out to everybody. You know, again, for context with these zoning amendments, because they can take quite a while and a lot of process. The goal, it would be preferable if we work out ideally what we're trying to accomplish first, what the goals and the issues are we're trying to resolve. The the councillors certainly, we could have, we could post on the website right now, the working document that the working group is looking at tomorrow evening. I'm not sure that that would make a whole lot of sense because it creates yet another version that's out there that's probably going to be revised the day after, based on feedback from that working group meeting. So I don't disagree. I, you know, I'd love to have the transparency, have everything out there in the entire process. But I think the intention there was to try to minimize confusion at the next meeting. I don't want to speak for the councillors, but I think the intention was to try to minimize the confusion by having a updated version that addressed as many issues as possible, working with that sort of core stakeholder group. Not to preclude anybody from seeing that draft, but just that it, I don't know if it makes sense from their perspective to post that on the website and say, this is the new working version, when it's not clear yet that that is the one that has been put forward by by everybody. But again, the councillors are certainly welcome. We can certainly post that, you know, information. I just, I don't know if that was the intention until after the working group meeting, which happens to be tomorrow night, so.
Yeah, that would be the idea.
I was, I was saying that shouldn't, shouldn't whatever comes out of the working group meeting be posted in advance so the public can see it? Because that's what we're going to be discussing at the meeting.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's the intention. The question will be, is there clear enough consensus tomorrow night for the working group that those edits could be made and then, you know, published early next week or something? I don't know. But that's, that's, that'll be up to the councillors to decide based on the working group's progress.
All right, for discussion tomorrow night, I just made the same note to myself to make sure that, you know, they understand that the public will be coming and the planning board and anybody else who wants to review whatever we come up with tomorrow night. Without being able to see it, they're very much hamstrung in how they can comment on it. They'll have to just listen, I mean, we'll have to have a really detailed presentation of it if there's nothing on the website as a result of tomorrow night's discussion. Yeah. Okay, well, you know what our constraints are. This one is being driven by the councillors and we'll do the best we can to get the information out before the public hearing. But be prepared for there to be a public here, a joint public hearing on it at our next meeting. Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Who was that? Tanya?
Yep.
Okay, who's the second?
Second, Alden.
Okay, Alden. And we'll go through the roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work. See you soon. Good night.
Night.